Mrs. Power.
Yes.
Mr. Glennon.
Here.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Chairman Lyons.
Here.
Also present and participating today is Town Manager Dunham, Assistant Town Attorney Nazaro, and myself.
Any comments? Change in the minutes when they're due 26 minutes?
I've got one question. On page three. Pardon me, right in the middle of the page, we're talking about the removal of the four shady lady black oak trees and replace with green buttonwood trees. We should say how many? I mean, did we insist on five or six?
So, um, they actually have modified their plan after approval. That was going to be part of my update at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
I have one. I made my own, found my own typo. Uh, it should say Thursday, June 26th at the top of the minutes instead of May. So I'll change it.
With that modification, I am moving through the minutes.
Mrs. Power.
Yes.
Mr. Glennon.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Lyons.
Yeah.
Okay, um, no meeting in August. Um, I'll see whoever on September 25th. Any ex parte communication?
No.
Mene, if you could administer the oath for those who are going to speak today.
Stand and raise your right hand. This way to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. If I don't know who you are, please make sure I get your name.
Okay, I think we're going to start with first application. Emers?
Yes. Oh, no. Yes, sir, Emers. I'm just representing Christina and the Emmers. My name is Rich Bremer. We're here basically to request approval for some of my changes that we did on the project that was already approved place under construction. If you want, I can walk you through the few changes that we did on the, mostly hard state landscape of the, oh, wait, hard state of the building.
Go ahead, Richard, they have it in front of them.
Oh, okay. Well, starting on sheet, on the side plan sheet, we can see that we have adjusted a little bit the weight. So, do you want to, or do you want to give reference to sheet number, please? Yes, SB 1, I'm sorry. I would like to start pointing out the first side revisions that we have done. So the first revision is on the front driveway, the circular driveway, we have extended and made the adjacent driveways against the house instead of being circular, we made it square for allow for additional parking. This is mostly because this property is right at the entrance, so there's also L, so in case of gathering at the house, there's not going to be any street parking. So we wanted to increase a little bit the amount of parking inside the property. Going around, we, to the east side, we adjusted the small wing wall that we had, we pushed it towards the front so we can hide one of those, uh, you know, delivery boxes, um, that, you know, so they can put the packages, so the packages on, sit on the, on the street, basically facing the street on the front door. Continuing on the east side, uh, the area between the side wall and the back of the house, we have changed that to originally gravel, but based on, uh, what Trey told us, you know, gravel and the code says gravel doesn't count 100% as a purpose area, so we're going to use mulch, mostly because our neighbor has big, very dense landscaping, so there's not much natural light, so grass is going to be really hard to grow there, so we're going to use that mulch in that area to maintain something a little bit more pristine and not so muddy or, uh, you know, in better shape. Continuing towards the north, around the pool, we also would like to have a perimeter of artificial turf, and we submitted the spec sheets for that artificial turf as an organic, you know, material, peruse, even though we don't count that as a purpose area, but it's a purpose material, water goes through. And we counted for all the square footage and everything, and we are still within the 40% required, uh, green area required by the city. If we continue going on the north side and coming on the west, the other, um, side wall that we have on the west side towards the front of the house, that was also pushed a little bit forward, just to gain a little bit more private area. There's only about two feet that has been pushed forward. And the last change on the side plan on that side will be the existing crucia that goes around the corner on Avenue S O L, we just cutting those back to have a better view of the house, and also when you're driving out, you know, you have also a better view who's coming in, and when you're coming out of the driveway, et cetera. We just kind of cut it back. The main one on the straight line on the west side is staying there exactly the way it is with the trees and everything, it's just the last portion after the curb. Those are basically the site plan changes. In addition to that, on the east garage, the two car garage, we have changed that from being a double car garage door to a single car garage door, and this is mostly just for better access in and out of the house. And the west single car garage, we changed it from an eight foot garage door to a nine foot garage door. Again, same idea to have a better access into the garage. In addition to that, we changed a little bit the front door of the house. We're going to have a solid door as it was originally, but we're going to have a transom, a glass transom above the door. We submitted the pictures and we have actually the material of the door, um, in case we want to have the actual, the cover of the door.
Oh, you're on that subject, uh, you have the tile for the roof.
There's two tiles here, and this is the one for, I'm just curious to see how it goes. Beautiful. Edit. Thank you. Additionally to that, um, the two windows in the master bateau on the west side of the house, they're kind of large, uh, by six inches, they're a little bit wider, so we can get a little bit more natural light. Those would be, those two windows right there in the back.
On the north side.
They're on the north. On the west side. Okay. In the master bateau, right, on the east side of there, the same. Then on the back of the house, the main sliding glass door from the living area into the, um, loggia or veranda, have reduced, um, in width. Again, we maintain the same percentages, I mean, the allowable percentages of glass in the house, and, you know, the style in there hasn't changed in the house, it's just the width of the, the sliding glass door in the back have reduced by.
Have you reduced the type of glass?
We reduced some of the glass, but we're still within the allowable, you know, glass amount. And additionally to that, um, one other change is basically defining the actual color of the rooftop, and we brought a sample for the rooftop. And I think that is basically the whole list of revisions that we want to get approved for this house. Do you have any questions?
Any question on that?
Not, oh, there are double, uh, yeah, there's double pictures in the cupboard, then you said?
Yes.
Some with landscaping and some with more landscaping.
Yeah, one, it's because, so you can see the house.
Oh, okay.
It's just for clarification. Because if we put the trees there, then you're going to see, you know, how the house looks. That's mostly the reason.
But if you were driving by in the street, R2 would be just all of the trees.
Yes, definitely.
And you said on the curb, which would really be near the entrance to.
Yeah, originally, you're going to make it safer, actually, for those leaving or coming. You want to go back maybe on the picture, there's one from the side. This one, the crucia used to go all the way to here, so we're adding those back, you know, so you, one, on the curb, you have a better, you know, view of the side triangle, it's working, actually, we put the side triangle currently, it wouldn't tear the side triangle. And you have a better view also of the house. And when you're exiting the house as well, you know, you're making that right turn, because you kind of make a left turn, you make that right turn, you have a better view of who's coming in.
Trey, on the original approval, was there that much artificial turf around the pool, or is that an addition or expansion?
I don't believe there was any artificial turf on the original application.
Yeah, so that's a big, that's a big change.
Yes, sir. But it's compliant with the amount of. Uh, yes, we talked about that. What you mentioned too earlier was they were originally planning a stone, kind of duchy type, um, stone on the west side.
East, yes.
East, on the east side, where, um, there's a lot of landscaping from the neighborhood, grass will not grow. Um, I indicated to Mr. Bremer that that is actually counted at 50%, not zero, for landscape open space under our code, and that's why you mentioned that you changed that to.
Mulch.
Uh, to mulch. So whatever landscape we're in, so that would then not, that would then count for landscape open space. So they were right on the edge of where they needed to be for the, um, for the landscape open space with the addition of the artificial turf, making that adjustment there.
And it would be visible from east, north, west side.
Yeah, there is a very significant mature crucia hedge, but as long as that is maintained, you will not be able to see from the other side of the place.
You know something? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve a level two architectural site plan based on finding that the conversion of 1,286 square feet of natural sod be converted to artificial turf and modifications to a previously approved application. It includes a new rooftop color, changes to the garage doors, a new front door, architecture modifications, and alterations to hard state and landscape plans meet the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards.
Mrs. Power. Mr. Glennon.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Lyons.
Yes. Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, the next application is the Ellis, application 25 slash 15. Is it possible? There's grass on, probably, if you look at it. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'll just wait for them to bring up the slides. I'd like to run through the presentation slide outside if you don't mind. While we start for the recording, Peter Papadopoulos with me is Peter Smith, with me as architects. Also with me is Dustin and myself, and I say, Arthur. And we're here for you today to present Ellis's new house, that's been bucked through by Polo Drive. And both Steve and Robert, who are in the audience here today, have waited patiently this past year while studying and designing their family home on the site, wonderful Eric and Chum. Look at the first slide in the area.
Sorry, I'm tired. They do have it in front of them, if you want to go ahead.
Okay, perfect. I'll run through the slides, page by page, and then I can talk to those of the area, for those not fully acquainted with the site. Um, it's located on the northeast corner at the intersection of Polo Drive and Banian Road, and north is at the top, so the next slide is the name. Perfect. The following one is, you can see the neighborhood is a great mix of architectural styles with both new and older homes. The next one is, um, this is the existing property and the structure. As you know, the structure is planned for demolition. There's an existing perimeter hedge with a few trees and most of the solid property, and Dustin will elaborate on that. The next one. Quickly, 3525 Polo Drive is a non-waterfront corner lot in the Gulfstream Core District. It's a somewhat irregular shaped lot with a total buildable area of 19,985 square feet. Next one. This is our site, the next one. This is just showing the existing survey, um, the current grade and how the existing house, um, sits on the lot. The next one. This is a study of showing, um, the neighbor setbacks on the streets and then how we relate to those. Next one. This is a closer view of our property with the jointy neighbors and the existing setbacks and the proposed setbacks. The next one. This is an aerial study looking east of our property in design, um, studying the immediate context of our design with our neighbors. We'll elaborate on this a little bit later, but we wanted to show you how we carefully studied how this house would sit within the fabric of the neighborhood. Next. Another sectional study of our design on the right with the newer home across the stomach and across the street from us from Polo Drive. And how we compare to their existing heights. Next one.
Cool. Which way to that west of you?
Correct, so the section is if you're looking north, standing on Polo Drive, the house to the west of us is to the left, and our house is to the right. The next slide, please. One app.
All right, well, I'm back.
That's welcome.
If you could go back to that.
Sure.
I think that's great depiction. I just, as a note for everybody, the surrounding landscape, all that's going to be taken out.
And Dustin will elaborate, we're going to keep it through construction, but yes, we're going to put it back in the CC and help these streets. Perfect. I'm looking quickly at the colored site plan. My brief is to create a very well-sighted and simple home with strong actual connections within a well-landscaped envelope. The idea was an arrangement of space to create a predominantly one-story, for a one-story house for daily living, with the second story containing two guest suites, all oriented to take advantage of the southern exposure. The floor plan is centrally situated with an entry feature that directs casual entry procession. The main access centers on the arrival stairs and terrace landscaping with an extension procession up to the front door showcasing the central mass that's flanked by balanced one-story gateways. This type of single-room arrangement invites uninterrupted outdoor views that allows for deep natural light and reduces the assumed footprint of the home. One of the first decisions we made was how we wanted to limit the impact of the different grain hats on the design and to minimally impact the smooths here. We also wanted to minimize the slope of the driveway and achieve this by placing the garage and the entry foyer lower than our finished draw, which allowed us to better mitigate the height differences. We gradually got up to the height of our finished draw that was required. We didn't just place the housing and created a steep slope driveway. You'll see this more clearly in the elevations. The next slide, please. Looking at the technical site plan, most residents is a partial two-story Anglo-Courier style home which fits comfortably on the corner lot, respects and relates to the surrounding homes that contribute to the community fabric. And we allocated most of the equipment on the north side and a little bit of equipment behind the cabana on the, on the east. Next one. Looking at the two-dimensional line drawings, the simplicity of the design becomes clearer as does the proportion of the facades. We've intentionally designed the second story over in the northeast part of the plant so that it won't be visible from either Polo nor Banian Roads, and it's a really small footprint of second floor. Next slide. Moving around to the north and south elevations. Next one. And then one-story cabana. Next. Pausing quickly on the, um, 3D modeling with landscape, then you'll see that the arrangement of the building form of a central mass using rectangular configurations of tables, stepbacks, both horizontally and vertically. This results in a simple roof geometry consistent with the neighborhood character. Additionally, as I've mentioned, we've been extremely sensitive and diligent to accomplish the increased base flat elevation, both as it relates to the new design and especially as it relates to the jointy neighbors. And the next slide is without landscaping. Next slide. And a view directly at the front door game of landscaping, we've employed a very simple and subtly accentuated series of details, the wood shingle roof, the simple wood pleasure emphasized by 24-inch overhang, and exposed great wood back to tables with a tongue group painted wood support. Traditional exposed copper gutters with downspouts will complete the needs. Next slide. Again, without landscaping. Next one. Moving around the house and elevation, the detail maintains the same basic palette with the facade opening up more showing the generous outdoor space and covered leisure. Next one of that, and landscaping. And next slide. Looking at the detail sheets, the roof has a pitch of a seven over twelve with a wood shingle tile. Windows are traditional clad with impact double hump, utilizing button bars to provide glass appropriately. We have a combination of colonial and vernacular style, operable shadows that are correctly sized for each window. We have a smooth stucco wall finish with stucco window sills and trim details. Uh, the color scheme will be simple, the base stucco color, trim railings, columns, windows and doors will all be white and the shutters will be a dark blue. We have some samples of color like the Casimir on the end of the presentation. Next one. Just the details showing, um, our eaves, overhang, and the details I previously mentioned. These are just our line drawings with a little bit of color. Next. The other elevations, next one. And through our design process, these floors represented commonly used Anglo-Courier styles and details that we've taken as our inspiration. We studied several ways of expressing the roof lines while maintaining the overall simplicity of the house. And next one. The continuation of these details that I'm sure you've seen, and I've seen a lot of the style around the town. Next. Just this is the floor plan, looking a little closer. As I mentioned, it's mainly a one-story living. Next one. This is just the second floor, as I mentioned, two pissed, um, suites with a little sitting area tucked away, not visible from any one of the streets. We wanted this to be a predominantly one-story house. Next one. This is a simple roof plan. Next. Again, this is our study indicating that the center to both things versus each facade, and we need both in excess of code mass. Next one. That's, that concludes the architectural presentation, you wanted a landscape presentation on landscape features.
I think we can just get the whole thing and then. Okay, questions?
Good morning, Dustin, my design group in Palm Beach. As we look at the existing vegetation, um, the question was asked about the north and the east buffer. Right now, it's a reka palm, so it's kind of almost a real property thing to me, so it's a wonderful construction buffer which will remain during construction. And the ultimate plan, the ones that are on our side, they are getting removed, come up with a little bit, a different buffer with some varied heights and varied material, so it's not so dense, and we love some of that ocean breeze ability to come through while still giving privacy to the neighbors. So, um, to answer that question, that's a game there regarding that. Right now, it's kind of eclectic, um, just a variation of material on the project, and nothing really like what I would call a specimen significant with saving. The problem is when a lot like this has to be raised, literally raised, the house and then the lot, it's very complicated because we've got to relocate for temporary nurseries, and unfortunately, there's nothing there of value, so we're going to start fresh. So that's what the demolition plan shows, really, all the vegetation except the north and east buffer, uh, which we think is a wonderful, uh, construction buffer for the neighbors during this time period. We look at the site plan in, uh, we're in CHL 3.0, jumping ahead there, Peter walked us through, but a couple things I wanted to just kind of highlight. I think, um, the team has done a wonderful job in creatively, you know, kind of mitigating, um, the finish floor of the house, because it's higher, and then obviously the street is very low. So we've done this with a, just a series of terracing. As you can see in the front, there's some low walls. We've done a great job, I think, of layering materials, so you don't really sense that the terracing is strong, and as you look in the southwest corner, even like the access to the backyard, you know, we've got the race plan to reduce into the facade. We've got a low retaining wall, and we're able to kind of, you know, cut that, let's say, that grade differential in half, and by the time we get to the backyard, you see you've got some little steps in this, we call transitional area, which then allows us to go up to the, the, the main floor of the garden, which gives as much lawn as possible for the children and the grandchildren. Uh, we've also got a little beach access there in the east, so our clients will come back and forth to the beach. You know, I think the pool is sized appropriately, the lawn, the planting, uh, so as Peter mentioned, it's been a lot of thought with, uh, you know, really trying to be, um, just understanding the site and not trying to do the biggest house and be mitigated with these retaining walls, and I think it's a real level in an appropriate way. As far as the materials, the front driveway will be a four tabby show material. Sure, you're very familiar with it, wonderful coastal binocular. What's nice about it is this, you know, expansion joints are about every 200 feet, so you end up with four-way paper with a thousand of them, so it's very cleanly, very pretty, very coastal, very appropriate. And then we're going to have the accent with a limestone, which is a very nice material, and then this will find itself with all the flat work in the back. So everything's consistent from the front to the back, and really ties in well to what Peter's done on the site. As we continue on, you can see the plan there, um, I think we've done a good job, uh, you know, kind of restoring historical landscape, the historical landscape right now, uh, which, you know, the neighbors would be accustomed to, would be a wonderful combination of palms and trees, so we're bringing that back. You know, we're bringing palms there, but it's not just a monoculture of arica palms, we're bringing coconuts and, and, and some other smaller palms, rusty fig, some pretty gumbo's, day palms, um, you know, just, just sort of kind of assortment to really bring in some variation in there to really soften the design. Go ahead, Renee. So there's our elevations there for the north elevation, again, once the rekas are gone, we're going to put the crucia hedge in there, and then we're going to sprinkle coconuts at varying heights, uh, so we'll obviously have the pass of the privacy, uh, the ground level, and the second floor will be mitigated with the varying heights, the coconuts and the palms. And then when you look at the south elevation, um, again, you know, the, the wall is only four feet, uh, but once we come in, we have that secondary wall which brings our grade up, so, uh, it's going to feel very scale appropriate in the street. Uh, we've done a little colonnade of pigeon plums along the southwest corner, specimen tree in front, and then you see the varying textures as you move eastward. Continue there. So there's the east elevation as well, um, the guest house, uh, pool house, excuse me, really serves kind of the back grade for our property, and once we put in our hedges there, rusty figs, coconuts, um, a specimen gumbo, gumbo, Alexandra palms, a box that's outside the door there, um, I think it's going to be, feel very pretty, very coastal. Going to the front of the house, as we mentioned earlier, we've got some vines, a platty garage, and specimen trees, day palms, pigeon plums, and all the different textures and materials, and even brought in some blue flowers to go with some of the blue on the house, so it is a very thoughtful. Go ahead. And these are some of the images you are seeing on continuing. Go ahead. Keep going. Backyard, keep going. And there's our central plan, which we, you know, uh, really worked well with our engineer to make sure that, um, you know, all the drainage will be appropriated, looking for as little as possible of the useable part lines. So, as Peter mentioned, we're here to answer any questions, thank you.
I think I might start, I prefer the eleven member stuff, but I need to point out, as chair, uh, one of the codes that are not being followed, uh, you may not have the history, but I have, as you get on the ARPB, maybe you're, you're former chair who will help design, say, design, construct, the side setbacks, and. And I was looking, I kept looking for the setback on the second story to the first, which is really a very key component of all the code. And I think that you may not quite understood how it worked. The second story should be, shall be setback from each first story side elevation. A minimum of 15% of the width of the first story of the house. And then for example, let's say for a 70-foot wide hall. The second story is required to be setback a minimum of 10 feet from each first floor side elevation. And so, so there's no setback from the second floor to the first floor. And we had a home built many years ago that had a straight wall. And we were very conscious of that impact on amassing and also impact on the neighbors. And given the fact that we have significant reality that you have to raise the house on the first street level by about three feet, four feet. The house is going to be that much higher consequence, which is beyond your control. But having the second floor sitting right over the first floor is not compliant.
I'm happy to respond.
Concern.
It was absolutely, thank you. And it was a concern for us and we worked with Tom, turning through the process. So if you go to the next slide. There were two areas, obviously our second floor is really visible from the, from the south side, which is the interior property for the homeowners. I'm going to point to this. We have our second story here and we have bumped out this first story in front of the master bedroom. That accounts for that 15% of the two-story and it bumps out about four feet. So there's a stick that covers the entry of the master, then it steps back for the two-story. And then on the reverse side, this element bumps out three feet and we have these large overhangs that constitute, we've accounted for those in our lot coverage and in our calculations. So they constitute a one-story element that protrudes beyond that of the two-story. So we are complying, I believe, with the code.
And you may be where on from the south elevation, but the north elevation, I would say that again, that I don't see how you break up the first and second floors on the north elevation.
You should get the slide, it's available, but it's that same picture, just in color someplace in here.
Sure, I'll go over that sheet. If you go back, I'll take a little side shot and then show you. Keep going back. Yeah, yeah, go back, four or five feet from there. Keep going.
On back or forward?
Forward, yeah, forward. It's not the next one, the one after, the one after. So here we go, this stuff over here. So on the north side, we have this element that bumps out into the setback. You can see we additionally stepped our second story an additional setback. We're not right on the second story setback, we're further in. So we've allowed for this bump up that raises up, it's about nine feet. How far does it bump up? It bumps up, it bumps out about four feet and it has a trans overhang. So it has a roof structure above that to count as a one-story. And this fact, it is our calculations. So we've treated that as a one-story element along that within the house.
You probably need twice that or more.
I understand the regulation.
We can't think this is the width of the property.
Well, so that was not the way the code was written. It was never intended to be that. And again, I know the author, we spent hours on the subject. It was the width of the house, not the width of some section, the full width of the house. So having, now the width of the house would be from the front entrance.
Correct. So you said the width of this, not the second story.
Everybody examined the code, you're seventy feet, that would probably not be a wing, that would probably be a whole.
Correct, and I was assuming the second story at that width is only the second story of the width of the house because that is.
You know visually, the second floor looks like it's stacked on the first floor. And we were trying to significantly, I mean significantly, move the second story from the first story elevation. The reason is the privacy, the light of the structure. And so that's the code. And it was a reason why, it was reviewed by the AARPV, recommended to the town commission, approved by the town commission. And that's what we've done, applying to homes for 10 years.
I appreciate the intent of the code. I think it's good, I think there is an argument, you know, for classical architecture to have two-story elements that are punctuated with penetration. I think the intent of the code is not to feel that the two-story is imposing on the neighbors. And I felt that we adhered to that.
I respect that. See, I think you would need to get a very, is that correct? So if the board is interpreting the width of the home to be the entire width of the facade, then we would need to either comply with that 15% on either side or we would be a variant, that's correct.
Trey, it's not labeled, but there's a picture of, can you get the picture of the north elevation? Before the pictures at the end, keep going. One of that, keep going back a little bit more. Okay, now, so we have the stack. There's just a flat base on most of the whole north side there, even with some fenestration. I don't think it's sufficient enough incidentally. And you're arguing that the railing on the first level that kicked out at four feet that you talked about would be the buffer between the first and the second floor. Really the buffer we need is halfway up the side of the building, which would be a division between the first and second floor, correct? Isn't that where the setback would be some sort?
Yeah, from the side of the building.
Yes, Trey, you know, we could roof that if we wanted.
I don't think that's the intent of the code. Right, it's not to just add some rain suicide to make it.
No, they're not, it's just where it's seventy feet. Fifteen percent equals some five. And we've been applying this consistently, so. I'm sorry, it's difficult to understand.
No, no, we understand, we made with the town, that's it, we needed with the town and we evolved the design based on interpretation. We felt we complied.
Who said, pay was a problem with us at the time was.
Sure.
I tried it, we as a town and particularly staffs tried accommodating applicants. So maybe it's a misunderstanding, but it's not compliance. And that was the original design anyway.
This was our, no, we changed it over our first.
We had originally the second floor pretty much on the north side of the house.
We tried to put it into the reasons that I mentioned.
It shouldn't have been. So the original plan would work and it doesn't work. You know, there are other members of the board thinking.
This is a beautiful home. I mean, it's beautiful, I don't really strong on that at all. It's magnificent, is there not some way to move the second story over that wing south some?
I mean, they absolutely.
I'm looking for the area over the top again.
This is, the slides aren't. Fifteen feet, it's just hard to reconcile. Adjusting the second story, trying to mitigate the setback, but taking into consideration the one-story component. It doesn't, I don't know if it meets the code, you know, we're trying to mitigate the second story impact on properties. It's really our property on the south side, no one else will see it except the homeowners. On the north side, next to the neighbors. We felt that we did, but if we had to move that another 15 feet, I think it's detrimental on something no one's ever going to see and that we're in the back of the property. So it's a difficult code to understand the intent of, other than it's for the second story to mitigate the impact to the, to the design.
So when we're looking at the review sheet, you had the front elevation on the street, this case you're tied over the street too. But it was, it was never just the street impact, the result of the impact of the adjacent home. The ones on the side and the back. For those who are looking at these houses, it's not just people driving by.
Sure.
And the impact, for example, the former applicant struck about high vegetation, you know, white, grass won't grow. And that's a, that's a consideration. The, just the privacy of being in the pool and not having a second story right on the.
Sure.
So it just, as you can see, I'm kind of stuck at this point. I feel strongly about it. But again, you know, just one member. And I agree with Mr. Smith, the entire house, the concept of the house is beautiful. I do have one other question, I'm struggling with it, so I'm looking it up now, but the picture was up here. Having a garage at a different grade than the rest of the house, to me, makes the house very unbalanced. And I was, you might have one in the house, a rewar house, dealt with this fever requirement, we made an inflation of pressure, vapor. And if you leave it as is, I understood from Trey that from the top of the garage door to the peak, the original peak, it was just too, too much open amassing. And you added that architectural feature of bumping it out, or bumped up the other side. And again, this is only my opinion, and I'm not an architect, but I've seen a lot of homes many years ago. Trying to address, and I understood what you were trying to accomplish, amassing. Then the house got really busy, there are all these roofs. I don't know, I like a cleaner house. We don't like really complicated houses, every little trick up, not that this is tricked up, but you know, people want it. Well, and so my question to you is, I probably shouldn't ask the question, but I won't ask the question. Is there any way, any reason why we couldn't raise the grade for the road, so it's all on one level?
You can, it'd be impossible to get the car in, you're driving from one foot, if the road is at one foot NAVD and the garage would be at nine feet, nine, six foot. So the garage would be this high up over a 30-foot span. It's, it is not a good look, it's not a good design and it would be really detrimental to the street, the landscape. And so better architectural resolution is to gradually get up to that height, so it's not in your face. Essentially what we would see then, there's a house on the hill and then everything just sloping down.
Well, I appreciate that, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, no, we studied, that was one of the starting ones.
We do have to follow drive generally, done that way. And that was probably because of the time or the language is the way it was brought.
We're higher than, we have to be higher than they are, unfortunately. So I think we are another two feet higher than they have to be.
You actually, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. I think this is an example in town as well that we can reference where you see a driveway and then you see another slope and ensure a car would scratch the driveway as they get into that. So I feel that the balance, I don't think it's that complicated. We really try to keep the roof lines and keep the intent of the design, to keep this cottage kind of feel. Thank you, no, no, I appreciate it, thank you.
But I think your chair is saying, you know, landscaping do, do that all.
If you look at it with the landscape.
We're very familiar with the property, we're the owners of our whole lives. And so the thing is, it seems to be that we're stuck on the north side. And Trey, what options would they have with the town commission? They could appeal for, you know, maybe additional fenestration, maybe a couple of deep notch back. I mean, what options do they have?
So, I mean, I read the numbers, it appears that what the house front is about 79 feet, which would require a 12-foot setback.
Between the one and two stories.
That's higher, you know, right, so you'd be looking at, you know, it's a 15-foot setback on the north side. So you'd be 27 feet from the property right there, I mean, but that's a pretty significant setback. That's, you know, I think it's about five feet or so, maybe six feet now, so you're looking at doubling that.
So they could, they could go to the town commission and request they keep these plans with the.
Variance.
They have to meet.
So I'm quite curious. Well, we haven't, we would need to notice that as a, as a variant, so we'd have to re-notice and reschedule. I think what I would prefer is maybe meeting with the applicant, trying to get through some of these issues and calling a special meeting of the air to be there, so they don't have to wait for two months, right? Because we don't meet in August.
When, when you read the variance venue, when you're building a new home, it's pretty tough.
I agree. So it's not our first choice.
It's not a really good choice.
It wouldn't be.
Building a new home.
Right, what's the hardship, right, correct? No, no, I understand and again, just our goal is to be sensitive to the neighbors, which we think we really are sensitive, understanding the code too, so it's not.
We don't, we don't doubt your intention. Truly, truly, but just the code was written, it was well thought out, analyzed, a lot of review, etc. And it's been applied for, I don't know, 10 years anyway. That might be exactly 70, I don't know, quite a good number of years. But back when this system's coming, I really liked the house, I understand. Issue on the garage, I'm fine with that. It's going to be a challenge for the town, because every house you gets built at that end follows, and I have the same drop in garage. I think I'd rather not see it, but I understand that that's what we're going to live with. I think how we mitigate it, it's good to do it, so I'm fine with that. The only thing I would ask in the landscaping, the northeast corner, make sure I got what, north and east corner? If you could put some, it's, it's, the coconut palms don't go all the way to the corner on the east elevation and on the north elevation.
That one maybe.
Do you see the corner's open?
Yeah.
Now the northeast corner. Yeah, there you go, yeah. If you could put some there, please. I think that was the suggestion by my brother who lives diagonally behind that.
I have a question.
He can make the request, I'll just make it.
While we're on there on the screen, it's easier to ask what are, you are keeping versus what you're removing. You're not really keeping any of the, like this trees or nothing really.
No, sir. Then the tree in the corner, I think would look nicer, I'd go probably do that.
Yeah.
Maybe a shade tree or something pretty.
Yeah, Tom, I looked at that, you're putting in some significant.
This specimen tree, it's a beautiful tree.
Yeah, I mean, you're putting in a jumbo, the two on the front, something like this.
Rusty figs.
Yeah, I saw pictures of, I mean, they're beautiful. So I think you're doing a great job on that. There's a beautiful oak tree, I wish you could do something with that.
Yeah.
At the front entrance.
We looked at it, it just.
Is that where you can?
Well, it's so established, I mean, and the cost that we put everything, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure it's supposed to be healthy.
Yeah.
Okay, I.
Can I ask about the electrical and the AC stuff kind of behind the cabana? How far into the, it looks like the, you know, the setback is to the cabana, how far into the rest of the property is the electrical stuff?
So we're about eleven feet away from the property line. The cabana, the back of the cabana is at fifteen feet, and I'm overestimating, more feet, it could be less, it should be less than that. So eleven to twelve feet would be our setback to the east property line. And we're fifteen feet more than fifteen feet on the north side, we're probably about in the seventeen feet, sixteen to seventeen foot range on the north side, without question. Again, trying to be really sensitive with the neighbors, we're really cognizant, the biggest issue that this town's going to have is the drainage with new houses. I think if they're not the right intention, we kept the grade around the perimeter at the same level, so we're not impacting the neighbors at all. We raised just our property and stepped it back and created an exfiltration system that keeps all the water on our property. So we're doing a belt and suspenders, not only for our clients, but for the neighbors, they all have zero impact. If you can imagine, a newer home may build up their side walls, build up the whole property, and then that water pressure will actually seep to the neighbors if it's not done correctly. So we just noticed this in most of the work we do as Palm Beach, and they're very concerned about water there as you are here. So we kept the grade around the north and the east side at the same level, stepped it back at least fifteen feet before we raised our property, just so that the neighbors wouldn't be impacted at all. It's just something for future houses that come with all units. I've just noticed this in other jurisdictions.
Water on that property has a very big issue.
Yeah, so we have a whole exfiltration system that contains all the water that falls on our property. It goes through an underground system into a trench on our property and then dissipates into the earth, it won't run off onto the neighbors or onto the street.
Probably it's the current property, or the current house that's getting demolished.
I have that in the application, give me a second. I think thirty-five, someone said, I think that's correct.
Wasn't forty-five.
Yeah, I think it was like thirty-six. They had a warning after that.
Well, I can think.
Do we do partial, I mean, is it demolition and landscaping or?
I think you get the.
We would like to stop the demolition process regardless of the design, just want to get done before the season, to get everyone else's goal.
Trey, we should have debated that issue with property, Gulfstream, A1A, Mark, Mark asked, the mob's immediately had a plan. I was in favor, but the commission said no.
I think the issue with that was performing the demolition in season. They did approve the demolition with just sod and irrigate the lot until this time the house.
I would be in favor.
Yes, you're going to say, if we approve it, demolition and landscaping, then you're going to have to somewhat make a present.
No, no, we use the same, deciding it and irrigating it, it's time to incur.
You say these steps that you move the process along, so the timing is the same anyway, but that's what I'm thinking, we can, I think we can approve those motions. But I don't, I'm not speaking for the board, because I'm speaking for myself, otherwise I don't think I would move forward with the recommendation on the approval of the home yet. But I think we all sort of.
Yeah. How does that timing work with the demolition of the road stuff? Or?
Yeah, I mean, they want to be demoed before December first, so, you know, obviously this is, this is all well, I think we're getting toward the end. And the fact that it's not a Gulfstream Road, where the majority of this construction is based, to us right now, I think that, you know, it throws some additional traffic on that road. Perhaps with the school traffic, but the demolition, it only takes a few days.
It would only take a couple of days.
So.
I think two days to knock it down, maybe another three to remove, I think we're looking at seven, basically.
I think we would, we would work with the school or whoever to try to escape a lot of the best we could.
So I'm in favor of.
Yeah, no.
I have a special meeting, we're both in the Hattens, they're just flying out for the special meeting. If you want to do it, if you want to do it at all. But, you know, I mean, I'll try to accommodate you.
We have an August meeting, or we don't have to schedule August meeting.
So just as a feedback, the design of the house is favorable, we just need this one component to.
And the landscaping, sorry. What would you do with it?
Yeah, correct.
So just now trying to figure out where you can put the second story. So, right, so we talked about a number of things, the garage elevations, or, yeah, not landscaping, etc. We are going to need to adjust the equipment, and we are, Mr. Glenn correctly noted that, the setback is matched out with that minor accessory, the cabanas, so they'll need to relocate that somewhere else, I think that, it's easy. Renee and I were concerned about that second story portion, so, and the massing on the front side, so we missed that when that came in through some plan. So we'll address that as well, but really, we're just looking at how to manage the step back for the second story portion. And that's what we'll meet with him about and get a revised plan for a special meeting. If we can set a date now, we will not need to do this, so, I don't know, because, you know, those are the schedules, and we'll be able to specially set something now.
What is like the, the late Thursday, so like in August?
I got twenty-first and twenty-eighth.
Oh, you're pretty thoughtful, so.
Twenty-eighth being the last Thursday of the month.
Realistically, in terms of you.
We'll meet any day that you agree to.
So you can get it done.
We'll.
Twenty-first? Michael?
I don't think we'll be, but the Gulfstream starts the twenty-fifth.
So what do we do?
Does that count as Thursday?
No.
Would be the twenty-sixth.
Is Tuesday the twenty-sixth okay for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, I can check it, yes, Katie will be back, so.
You said that's when school started?
The twenty-fifth, it's on the Thursday of school.
Yeah, yep. So the twenty-sixth at eight-thirty? Peter, you want to mark that?
I've got that locked in, yeah. So please, we'll need to submit the drawings, and we'll have a lot of conversation after today, I'll be here for it. So I would like, we'd like to make a motion to recommend.
Wait, I have something to read in the record, I'm so sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I did find the last house, Mr. Glennon, was three thousand six hundred and seventy-nine square feet is what's there right now. Okay, but Mr. Roach emailed and he'd like to be read into the record. Dear Renee, I don't understand why this application is even being considered by the ARPB in light of the core district control area that was written by Paul Lyons and committee. I am totally opposed to a house this size and two stories built within the core district. It was my understanding that this area would be preserved from mega house construction. Would you please clarify why this is even coming before the ARPB? So we did have a discussion with him and told him it was within the parameters of the new code, but he still wanted it written to the record.
Is this a joining neighbor, Renee?
Uh, no, he's on another street, but in the core district.
Okay.
So, um, so just.
Yeah, make a motion for the application is moved to the specially set.
I'm going to make this two other motions first, do we want to wait and make all of them?
I think it'd be easiest if you have a piece of.
Okay.
Fine. I'm going to ask one question, always tell us that, I'm working on a seventy-second plan. So could you, the second lift of asphalt from our project back here, is front is going to be down sometime in February, March, in twenty-six? Could you kind of go over your schedule for demolition, you know?
So our demolition, we want to do before the end of November, be completed, we'll sod and irrigate, and our goal is to cross off construction at the beginning of the year.
Okay, but that's, that's a, I mean, it's going to change, so, but I'm, we're probably looking at spring twenty-sixth for the second lift of asphalt.
In the entire. The first month or so of our construction is going to be limited to one piece of equipment, because it's piles, we need to do piles on the property, so that may mitigate the amount of traffic that we'll have on our property, allowing for the roads to be resurfaced and finished. What you're concerned is the two working together, or is? I think, timing wise, it could be okay, because we'll be limited with minimal equipment for the first few months before, we won't have multiple trades on that project for a while. It'll just leave the construction sheltered.
So Trey, remind me, just we're all looking at the same reality. Under the code, I don't know, I don't read the code that well, what you can and can't do during the season. Some of you tonight have an impression, I thought you would need pilings, the pilings would be so annoying to do, wouldn't allow that, I don't know that.
Oh, right, typical, well, Trey can talk about that, it's usually what we look at it now, so. Sure, you don't? It's in order to allow construction to move forward, there are periodically issues where there will need to be some noise that is not prohibited. I'm sorry, not allowed in season. We have a provision in code that allows certain activities of short, limited duration that can be approved by the town manager. So if we had just a small, you know, driving piles or.
Driving piles.
Oh, yeah, these are not very.
Uh, they're either helical or. Oh, they're cat piles, they're not driven piles.
Oh, okay.
There's no vibration, there's no. No, 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 that's, they typically do that for side walls, for homes, it's either helical.
And then you were like, for even during the season.
Yes, but like the attorney said, it allows for exceptions for whatever.
There it is.
But the question is, yes, when he asks, you can say yes.
We'll work with the town, I think they're stager, and.
I mean, we have pre-construction readings, and it's not just driving piles, there are other.
Screening noise.
Parts to this equation in terms of construction activities that are limited or otherwise allowed by exceptions.
Thank you. So we'd like to be, work hand in hand with the town, that's obviously.
We'll have to, simply because of the location.
No, absolutely.
Okay, let's make a motion.
No, I'll make a motion to defer application twenty-five dash fifteen until our next meeting, special meeting, which will be on August twenty-sixth at eight-thirty AM.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Glennon?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Lyons?
Yes. Thank you for mentioning that. Good morning, I'm Luis Rivera with the Fanny Architects, we're representing lot three and lot nine. Starting with lot three.
Luis, sure. I apologize, I'm in charge of the time, I have to run, the balance of this committee has the authority. I've seen your plans, I'm fine with them, I think I've seen some before, several.
Yes, really times.
And thank you for keeping a good balance in terms of the play on the different, on the personal style. I apologize for the.
Along with lines, do you guys have any, you had a great, you had a long cap that showed all the houses.
Yes.
You just need to see it when you print it out, there's so much information, so we put it on there.
It looks hard and small, it probably looks better on screen.
All right, he's starting with lot three, guys, so go to twenty-five seventeen.
Sorry, go ahead, sure.
No worries.
So the first slide is just the front elevations with some of the massing, that we're providing. The next slide is the location of the lot in comparison to the other lots. The next one is the page that you're looking for with all the elevations. This is our lot, right here, lot three, and it's blanked by a two-story lot two and a one-story lot four.
Christian, I may be looking at the wrong package, which package are we looking at?
Twenty-five seventeen.
Lot three.
Lot three.
Lot three, yes.
For some reason it looks blurred, but I believe there's another page, yeah, the next page has a zoom version of the two adjacent houses.
Not ours.
No?
Nicole, for further, could you put this in the packets, please?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and they like to see.
This is a zoomed in version of the adjacent houses, our lot. Lot two is West Indies, and the lot four is an I would agree then, second to our lot. Of course, there's different, yeah, layout. Next slide is our site plan with our calculations, the required calculations. On our next slide, we have the floor layout, floor panel layout. Location of equipment. This slide is the material selection page. Next is the rear elevation, without the landscape, so we can appreciate the full architecture. The next slide is the 2D version of front and rear elevation. Next slide, the side elevations. And for the landscape, which is the next, goes lights, Louis Blavos from Adjacent View, he's going to be.
Hi, my name is Louis Blavos, I'm just a huge landscape architect. Basically, on this property, in the rear, again, we have the required green budwood poplar trees. We have four on one side and the other one, I mean, on the east side, and one on the west. In directly rear from the pool, we have hot Montgomery palms, a triple and two doubles, with some interest in color with bobby villas. And then on either side of that, two additional small leaf puceus. In addition to that, there is a fishtail hedge beyond the property that's existing. In front of that would be a porticarpus hedge, we're starting at five foot, and then of course, in front of it, it'd be all the additional plantings for texture, interest, and colors that we've discussed with the neighbors. This is kind of interesting, on the east side, where we're proposing two garden pods, which is basically, the owner likes gardening, and they're just going to be eight inches high, six by four, you know, so we can contain the soil. Nothing, won't be visible from the street. We're also designing, proposing a gate that's going to be screening any kind of visibility into the rear, and have a bobby villa barn over it, in addition to that, a porticarpus hedge. Both sides have existing. Both sides have existing pousia hedges, so there's screening to that. In addition, where we have the garage doors, we added two caliphills, which kind of flag the existing caliphill that's on the lot four side to totally screen the garage doors from the neighbor. And then on the west side, there's existing, we're showing them off the property, fishtail palms because of their garage. And then we also have two additional intermediate palms where the privacy area is outside the master bathroom in the front. Other than the three existing live oaks there in the front, we were creating a little porch area with some foxtail palms. And then either side, we're flagging the architecture with, these are garcinias and then double alexanders kind of up and above to kind of break down the massing of the roof. Other than that, any questions?
Yeah, and what are the rest? Great landscape, and all the ones that are already in, this will be similar to what's there, right? Now, you said this is for an home?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes.
There's some variations, how we can see it. Specifically the question.
Yeah. Is there a reason the generator is kind of, I assume that's the G as generator?
Yeah.
Off the house, kind of in the middle of the?
Yes, because the other walls around the house have the western doors and usually bedrooms like on the front, right? So the only space that's close to the garage that is not intrusive to the windows would be off the, off the wall. And it's about three, three foot six from the other. But it's fourteen feet from the property line. It should be far enough from the neighbor.
Is that where you put the generators on the other properties?
Some of the other properties didn't have generators. Ones that were owner specific, those were the owners' request of the generators. And we kind of did the same thing, a lot six and a lot ten.
This is a kind of a common question on the, the east and west borders. Are you usually just one hedge to string between the two properties or? You know, or they each have their own hedge on their own property?
No, it's one hedge.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's one hedge and whoever, I guess, got built up first is responsible for that hedge.
Okay.
So.
So the one on the west, there's one there already?
Correct. That's already there, that, that's about six foot, you know? And the one on the east lot four? Yeah.
If it's not in yet, it's going in anyway.
Yeah, it's going in.
Ah, okay.
When this property gets constructed, yes. What we try to do with the buildings in between is try to work with the existing trees or whatever, so we're not a problem with each other.
Any other comments, your questions?
Mr. Glennon, if you could make the motion since Terry's got laryngitis.
Sure. I've moved to approve the proposal on application twenty-seven seventeen, twenty-nine fifteen to our code, as provided to the ARPB. Sorry.
Yeah, it's on the back, the motion is on the back, there you go.
First, first.
It is, it is.
Motion to recommend approval of level three architectural site plan based on the finding construction of a fifty-four hundred sixty-four square feet Anglo Caribbean style, one-story single-family dwelling with two-car garage and swimming pool, including the landscape and hardscape, which meets the minimum intended design manual and applicable review standards with the following conditions. Any minor modifications landscaping should be submitted to the town manager for review and approval and any major modification will be brought back to the ARPB for review and approval prior to the commencement of landscaping.
Mrs. Power.
Yes.
Mr. Glennon.
Yes.
Acting Chairman Smith.
Yes. Thank you very much. You can move on to the next one, just give us a minute to, you know, this is going to be twenty-five sixteen, right? This is lot nine.
All right, if you're ready, please.
Before you do. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. This is lot nine, Anglo Caribbean style home, one-story. Second slide is the location in comparison to the other lots. The next slide, like in the previous home, we're showing the flanking houses. Lot eight is over the white roof and lot ten is a two-story home or three from fifty different style. Next slide.
Is, is are eight and ten under construction or?
I believe lot eight is under construction for sure. Lot ten, we just approved the last.
Good range.
Next slide is the site plan with our calculations. The next slide after that is the floor plan. And next one is the material selection, roof, shutters, door, colors. Next one is view of the rear elevation without the landscape, appreciate the architecture. And next is front and rear elevation in two D. And next one would be the side elevations as well in two D. And for the landscape part, Louis Blavos.
Thank you, Louis Blavos, just a few, again, this is a wider lot. In the rear, the fishtail palms on the east side, lot eight that's under construction will have eight-foot caliphillum hedge installed upon landscape installation, pousia on, on the west side. Interesting enough, we have the, in the rear, green budwoods in addition to that, the, we have three garcinias behind the pool, you know, with the additional textural flowering plants and some formal topiary balls within color that give it interest and color. In the front, it was kind of interesting, the owner really recommended and loved to have a beautiful Canary Day Palm. So at the entry, off-center for her request, we have a beautiful specimen Canary Day Palm. We also added some large coconuts throughout, which kind of repeats something that we've done in the past to, to a couple of our models. But we haven't really repeated that often because people don't like to have to clean the coconuts. But this is different, so here it is. I think it looks great with the architecture that we're proposing. And then up against the building in the front, we have some columnar potocarpus. She wanted the tropical, but also the Palm Beach look, I think that accomplishes it. Kind of structured, tiered landscape with ground covers of phytoscreen, Arisah and Jasmine Minima. Some interest at the entry, again, we're repeating the topiary balls, kind of going back in the formula. And then as, as you go to the entry, obviously to the right, there's a major specimen of a beautiful Canary Day Palm with some imperial bromeliads, potocarpus sprinkles, and again Jasmine Minima, which is a low-six inch ground cover. That about sucks it up? This was a fun landscape, actually, it's kind of different.
There, yeah, a little more of a topiary look.
Well, topiary combined with the palms of the Canary and the coconuts and Montgomerys, you know, and that. And then also, I think it was a nice mix. It was interesting because of the owner's request, but we, I think we accommodated both. Kind of varied the look of everything else, but also gave her the textual and palm quality issue.
So it looks like on the schematic that lot eight has this big bumper tree that isn't even on this property, right? Going down the east side of the property?
Yes.
Looking at the dotted property line, so that we're not, you're not having a hedge on the property?
No, we're not. Well, that's an easement right there, so we'll put.
Oh, okay.
One, one easement right there.
Right, that's, that's there?
Correct, correct. And the owner to the east, that is lot seven, they're doing an eight-foot, eight to ten-foot caliphillum hedge from the get-go. So that's going to be a full, mature, eight-foot-high hedge. It really didn't warrant, you know, doing a hedge there. And as you can see, we pulled the, the four-foot fence that's required for the pool outside the utility easement and put a hedge on that area. But the rest of it, we just left it open.
Where is the, can you, what's the privacy garden on the side that's kind of going into the setback?
That's just a four-foot wall with some landscape that you can look from the bathroom.
The, the hedge on the outside of that four-foot wall, which is what we're permitted, is going to be a eight-foot potocarpus hedge, just to give it the privacy. In addition, obviously, to the hedge on lot ten.
Is there an outdoor shower in that area?
Not on this one, no, no.
Just your garden.
Basically, well, what we're doing on this one, we kind of brought in some stepping stones with pebble rock and then, and then there's some restanding planters with like grasses and bromeliads and so forth.
It's more of a private.
Yeah. Yeah, it's more, something to view, basically. Nothing large, the, the two little trees we're showing there are just garcinias, just kind of framing the views from the master bathroom outdoors. There's some Thai plants for color, but then the texture, there's some mulley grass, there's, there's a desert rose, strab in a planter, just bearing heights of planters with the.
The colors on here, it's a blue shutter, white wall. What's the roof color?
It's charcoal.
Charcoal, oh, okay. Is it that lot, that panel the blue? I'm just, yeah, we use that exactly.
No, not at all, that's like the worst light we were doing. We were very, very cold, and it's so dark because the neighbor has dark. So it's very light.
That's the shutter color?
Yeah, I was going to say, luckily, I'm under a sand color line.
That, that, that could best with white.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go get the board real quick, just to make sure that's allowed.
What's the sun into that, it's going to look very similar to what we have here on the red. The color that we put on the shutter is. The sun into it, it gives a bit of a tint.
She'll, she'll see if it's an approval. Let's just wait for it, maybe a second here, any other questions? So just out of curiosity, how, how this ails, will this be like ten out of fourteen or something?
One more.
That's it, they're all sold but one?
Yes.
Well, we have got models still.
Models are not sold.
Three models?
Oh, there's some models still.
Yeah.
They'll start to sell those now.
And we have the last one, we're coming in in September.
Lot eleven.
Lot eleven.
That has orders. Yeah, that one's going to be on the northeast corner.
That one is outside.
South.
Towards the middle of, middle of the block.
Thirteen just come. How many are two stories?
We have lot two, lot six, lot seven, and lot ten.
Yeah, at least four.
Four, fourteen.
We've all were worried about it looking too much similar to a developmental kind of thing. It doesn't seem, it's between landscaping and architecture.
We worked really hard on the, for you to.
Very cheap, well, how's the look for the area, okay?
No, it's not. So the shutter color is too light, so they'll, they'll come back with a little darker.
The sample's really light. So where, you're gonna pick a darker blue?
And we can prove that.
Yeah. Yep.
Motion to recommend the level three architectural site plan based on the findings of the construction of a five thousand four hundred and thirty-eight square foot Anglo Caribbean style, one-story, single-family dwelling, two-and-a-half-car garage and swimming pool, including new landscape and hardscape, meaning the minimum intended design manual and have a lower review standards with the following condition, that any minor modification to the approval landscaping shall be submitted to the town manager, such as the shutters, for review and approval. Any major modification shall be brought back to the ARPB for review and approval prior to the commencement of landscaping.
Thank you, Renee.
Mrs. Power.
Yes.
Mr. Glennon.
Yes.
Acting Chairman Smith.
Yes.
And Nicole, if I could have that changed before the commission meeting, that would be great. Shutter color.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, great job. There is another lot staff.
Yeah, we have two small things. Don't, yeah, I was just kind of a bear volunteer, but I just wanted to give you an update. The city of Florida Legislature, legislature, enacted legislation that will advocate the House Homehold Powers to regulate artificial turf. House Bill six eighty-three requires the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to adopt minimum standards for the installation of synthetic turf on single-family residence areas that are lumpy or less in size and include the majority of the core in place also in districts as well as some other properties in the Ocean West, North, South and East Front Districts. The two be adopted standards by the DEP are to consider material type permeability, stormwater management, global water conservation, water quality, proximity to shade and other vegetation and other factors impacting environmental conditions on its base properties. The DEP has not enacted these standards yet, but once they do, we will be prohibited from enforcing our artificial turf regulations to the extent they conflict with what the DEP requires. So at this point, we are continuing to march forward with the application of our artificial turf regulations, but we are waiting for that, that, that's the word I'm looking for. When we don't have our homehold powers, we're at a rule, anyway, preemption. We're waiting for that preemption to be enacted, but I don't know how long the DEP is going to take. At some point, we will be looking at our actual turf regulations, I believe. Our Commissioner Rob Canfield wanted us to look at them and see how they were doing, so we were being in a discussion, discussed that at the commission level, but at this point, we're kind of at a standstill until we figure out what the DEP is going to do. So I just wanted to update you on that, because I think I talked about that maybe a month or two ago. Anything like this that we can do in the fall or in the spring, out during the.
So it's interesting, we, the state stepping in and getting kind of statewide sort of standard?
That's right.
Would they, and we don't, if they're more strict than us, we have to abide by them? Can we be more strict than them?
We cannot enact anything that is inconsistent. So if they say you have to allow enhanced side guards, you know, or something like that.
Trey, is the intent on them getting involved because they're concerned about the burden of that losing the progress?
It was part of a, a larger bill that related to building permit processing times, applications, revisions to the Florida Building Code. So it was, I can't say that it was really targeted one specific thing, it was just kind of, I don't want to say thrown in, but just one part of, of a larger bill. So I think that part of it is, you know, this whole, you know, premium.
So I think that part of it is, you know, this whole, you know, freedom to do whatever you want with your property, but also realizing that there may be some required regulations regarding content and things like that. But permeability and water usage and conservation were some of the things that the DEP needs to consider for the legislation. We'll, we'll see, and I don't know, I have no idea what that will look like, I mean, you know, I read the staff report and watched it go through, but really no hints on what specifically we're going to be looking at there. The other item that I touched on earlier is the changes to Cali Road, forty-one twenty Cali Road. They just went out to determine the cost of removing these very, very significant shady lady black olive trees, and it was significantly more than they thought, so they're revising their plan to only remove one. So they will make, they will keep three of the four black olive trees, and because that is now creating a different aesthetic, they wanted to change from, it was green buttonwood to cathedral oak, so they're going to replace the one removed shady lady black olive with two cathedral oaks on the south side, and then one cathedral oak will replace the green buttonwood that was proposed on the north side. Staff went ahead and approved that because that is something that we really can do on staff level. One tree being removed, reasonable replacement tree, certainly with three added. And it's just a minor modification to an approved plan, so we went ahead and approved that. I just wanted to give you an update that applications can look very different than what was approved. You know, we saw the application over in place also where there were some significant alterations that we felt were warranted to come before ARPD, because when you approve something and it has a brown, two brown garage doors and a brown roof, and then it's got kind of a gray roof, and the door's changed, now it's a single door and the door's white, I mean, that is a significant change to what the ARPD had seen before, so we really felt like it was warranted, even if it did not have the artificial turf on there, so at least come before the ARPD, because it did impact the aesthetics of the house pretty soon. With that, staff has nothing.
We are seeing a lot more artificial turf requests, will be interesting to see. Items by anybody aboard? No? There's nobody here from, from the public, so we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.